Or someone else. Is the? I assume that's a phone number, the person who just has a number associated with them, is that a, is that Jay? If so, you are muted, so.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, yeah.
Devon.
Okay, that is Devon, okay. So, alright, so we're still missing Jay. We do have a quorum though, so we can start if people want.
Okay.
Everyone okay with starting?
Yeah, I am.
Nine number came in.
Looks like somebody's coming in now.
Yep. Would the two four zero number happen to be Jay? Or somebody else?
Two four zero, no. I'm four oh two seven, but I, I came in, I'm, I'm viewing from John's screen for some reason.
Oh, okay. Well, yes, I'll. Call us to order at six oh two. John, if you could do the roll call?
Yes, good evening, Chair Horquay.
Here.
Yvonne Tucker.
Here.
Evelyn Stevens.
Here.
Hattie Callicott.
Here.
Absent. Alright.
Need a caller.
Alright, so. I guess the agenda was sent out ahead of time, does anyone have anything else to add?
I'm good.
Alright. Oh, I propose that we tack on in any other business at the end, just in case, because I forgot to do that when writing the agenda, so. So, can I have consent to the agenda, or I guess, are there any objections to the revised agenda?
I have none.
So, I will go with that as consent. Schedule for the, the February twenty second alleged, uh, election, John, can you scroll down in the packet? Alright, so. Yeah, that's too small. I guess if you can put the yellow bit at the top, and then we'll work down from there. Alright, anyone else have problems reading this, or is that good enough for people? I'll, I'll read it out loud, because somebody's, you know, for the people that are in by the phone, so. We've already had the start of our term, we've already had the thing that triggered the special election, so the deadline to submit public notice in newspapers is basically, because the newspaper comes out on a Thursday. The, it'll be printed the Thursday before the notice deadline, but we have to get to them on the Tuesday, so that's already passed, but I believe it went out, John?
That is the case, um, it was printed in the PG Post, as well as the Inquirer Gazette.
Okay.
I was able to make Inquirer Gazette this Thursday.
Okay, so. I have in there the deadline to review the absentee ballot form is being tomorrow, and that's because that officially, Sunday being thirty days before the election is when they can start requesting an absentee ballot. Then we have the voter registration deadline with the county. I'm not sure exactly what it is right now, I set it to thirty days out, because. You know, it's. The charter, when the charter amendment happened last year, it now says in accordance with state law, and. I have no idea what the state law is on this. Also, interestingly. Unless we actually accept state law, it does not apply to us, because when they say local elections, they are only referring to counties and the city of Baltimore. So. Alright, then our deadline for public notice, uh, which we will hit, as it already went out. Uh, deadline to submit public notice for the election date, time, and location is going to be beginning of February. The candidate filing deadline. Why don't I have that, it's February seventh, oh, right, okay, so yeah, so we said that one is February seventh. So. Probably remove that usually four weeks thing, because that's no, you know, that's never, that's hardly ever going to work for us.
Well, it, it would work on a normal election, so.
Right.
It's even, yeah, it's, yeah, it's. For a normal election, yes, but for a special election, when we're only dealing with forty-five days, we need to give two, two weeks' notice. Everything's tight.
Right, so I think, so I, I'm just looking at this very quickly, Joe, um, we're, we're looking at it, an escalated agenda.
Yeah, because we're, we're working more off of the.
Okay.
Thirty day.
Okay.
You know, out, you know, thirty days to do this, rather than forty-five days to do this.
Okay.
So, I guess special elections would be good to have three weeks before, but. You know, the closer it is to the election, the longer candidates have a, you know, the, the longer the period is to recruit candidates, so it's, it's a trade-off.
I, I have to find the irony in the fact that we moved our election date to November, so nobody would be. Doing their candidacy in January, and here we are, January and February, in the freezing cold, having candidates go out and knock on doors.
Well, so, so the thing though is, if you consider, um, the day that the election would have been, was that Monday snowstorm, if they had not moved the election. So that day that we got almost a foot of snow would have been our election day.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's a trade-off. Let's see, candidate filing deadline. On the seventh, there's then a Board of Commissioners, actually, I'm not sure. At the town meeting, I thought they said that they were flipping when the work sessions were, and the. The town meetings, but when I looked yesterday at the town's website, they still had that as being a town meeting on the eighth, John, do you know?
Yes, the plan would be, they would start the switch in March, so February would be.
Okay, so this which doesn't happen till March, okay, so I'll need to fix this, and, uh. I should state, I'm actually doing this from a friend's laptop, because I went to someone who has better internet access than I do, and forgot to bring my power brick. Yeah, so it's a good thing that everything's on a Google Doc. Or at least the main thing, um.
So the eighth would actually be the town hall meeting.
Right, would be the regular town meeting.
Okay.
We do have a conflict, though, because right now, the special election day is when the work session is scheduled. So, I don't know if they want to move the work session, or just have their work session when the election's going on.
That would be kind of silly, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, they can, they can officially do it, just, we're not going to be able to. You know, participate. It's, that one's up to them.
They, they picked the date, so.
Yeah, well, and I'm, and I'm thinking back to it, I think, I think I raised. I may have raised that issue when talking to Kevin, in the trying to figure out when to schedule things, and. But. We didn't, that was part of the reason for wanting to look at a schedule.
Well, if the twenty-second is a work session, is that all virtual anyway, I mean, does that?
Yeah, I mean, I assume they're not using the town hall, but that means that, that. The town clerk is going to be occupied, and the town clerk has duties during the election, because.
Exactly.
The, giving us the. Absentee ballots and stuff like that, and you know, if anybody has to do the emergency absentee ballots. So. I guess, John, if you could make a note to pass that along to the Board of Commissioners, to let them know about the conflict.
I'll do that.
Thank you. Alright, our voter registration deadline for the town is ten days before. It falls on a Saturday. I don't, I don't know exactly how we best handle that one, because we had had the discussion in the December meeting about the stuff that was. Less than ten days out of, do we move it to calendar days versus business days, and that one's right at the line, so, you know, does that get shifted to the Friday, or to the Monday?
I would, in my opinion, I, I would say since Saturday's the cutoff, when they come in Monday morning, whatever they got, they got.
Well, that one is one that has to be done in person, is part of the problem.
It's, it's got to be done, oh, in person.
I mean, there's, there are cards that need to be filled out, physical.
Oh, okay.
Because they have to sign it.
I hear John say he doesn't mind working on Saturday, the twelve.
Well, I mean, with the town hall closed, yeah, I don't, I don't even know what the procedures are now. Because, I mean, I know when I go over there, I like. Walk over and then call and see, like, hey, can someone let me in?
So, we're talking about February the twelfth now, right, I'm trying, I'm trying to.
Yeah, this is the February twelfth voter registration deadline.
Okay, so, uh, you're saying that the, the office would be closed?
Right, because it's a Saturday.
Is it possible for, because of all that's going on, that it could be open, just for that?
Oh, that's foolish.
Yeah.
So why do you have it up there if it's foolish, February twelfth, it's either.
Well, it's, it's ten days, ten days out, is what, what happened in the. The charter amendment that happened last time, because it, it used to be that it was thirty days out.
Right.
Yeah, but this is a special election, so all things are open, so February the twelfth, if February the twelfth.
Actually, actually, you make a very good point, is that the special election one does say that we are to run it. Oh, what was the exact wording, but basically, similar to a regular election, but actually does give us a little bit of more wiggle room than a regular election, so. We could choose to move it to Monday. Anyone have an issue with that?
Nope, I think that's an awesome idea.
Okay. What day, Monday would be the thirteenth?
Uh, Monday would be the fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Hey, that's Valentine's Day.
Yeah, uh, hold on, let me.
Okay, hey.
Down, because I'm not doing this from my own computer, so. Voter reg. We said. Twelfth to the fourteenth, and didn't we move something else?
Uh, absentee.
And the. Conflict with the.
Town meeting.
Uh, well, it's now a work session.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Also, the last data request an absentee ballot. So, this one, this one is actually kind of an odd thing, the way that the charter is written. It's, oh, sorry, the way. The ordinance is written, says ten days out, unless you have a special reason. And, and it gives a, you know, a list of reasons, but there is a state law that says you're not allowed to ask for reasons. So, if the state law doesn't apply to us, we still can, however, lawyer. Said, no, we had to take that off at one point, and so we don't, so there is a separate emergency absentee request form. That we've used for day of requests, because like, someone's in the hospital. And I don't think anyone has ever managed to turn it back around to us in one day, but. Because of the not asking thing. You know, do we need it ten days out, and actually, in the policy document. What we had been going with. I think I have in there that it's like. A deadline closer to the Wednesday before, you know, that gives us just enough time to get it back into the mail to them. And, and we have the flexibility, because this is a special election, so. Any, any opinions on this?
Joe, one of those reasons, though, is the applicant has been notified that as a condition of employment, he or she will be unable to be present to vote on election day. And that was one of the following emergencies.
Yeah. Well, also illness, and with COVID, I, I fully expect. You know, hey, somebody doesn't want to come in.
I, I agree.
I'm fully good with them taking an absentee ballot, so.
So can we? Can we put this as the date? And exceptions will be on the Monday?
Oh, so, so one of the other things, when you say the Monday, I assume you mean the Monday before the election?
I was Monday, yeah, the, well, the, the fourteen.
Oh, yeah, I mean, well, yeah, we can, okay, so we'll move the absentee, like, the official, regular absentee deadline. From the twelfth to the fourteenth, but I think we could even move it closer if need be, but, um. Yeah, the fourteenth is the week before. They still can use the emergency absentee form, which I forgot to get from John to update, so. We'll need to probably look that one over at some point, alright, so. Does anyone object to moving that deadline from the twelfth to the fourteenth?
No.
No.
Okay. Last data request absentee ballot, deadline to post a sample ballot. T minus four days, oh, right, so I set that as business days instead of calendar days, because that is a requirement on us. So that is the Wednesday before. Or in February sixteenth. And, and realistically, as soon as that we are starting to send out absentees, we have, we should know what the layout of the ballot is, and can post something. Deadline to submit the poll watcher is three days before. That one is the really messy one, because. Three days before, trying to keep it as close as possible to them, that's a Saturday. I mean, it, it would normally be a Sunday if we, you know, we're, or sorry, yeah, it would normally be that Friday before, you know, if, if, if it was still, elections were held on Monday, but. We're probably going to have to do setup on Friday, because.
Yes.
Monday is a holiday, it's President's Day.
Right.
So the town offices are closed.
I'll agree to that, Joe, in being there. The setup.
So, alright, so setup has to go to.
Afternoon.
From the twenty-first to the. To the eighteenth. But I mean, the poll watcher, I, I don't know that we can, like, justify it as being on that Friday, so we're just going to have to. You know, potentially allocate space and do a little bit of rearrangement on Tuesday morning.
Joe?
Yeah.
Have we ever had anyone submit the poll watcher?
Yes, I, I actually, uh, there were multiple poll watchers.
Years ago.
When I got elected.
Yeah, wow, okay.
And when the firemen weren't running.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was when the firemen were getting voted out.
Right.
Teresa Bell Burton's daughter was my poll watcher. And. Bonnie Bray was, was also a poll watcher that day, and. She got in trouble for telling people to remember, like, going out into the hallway supposedly to the bathroom, and then telling someone to remember to vote, and. Yeah.
So, so in the meantime, with this poll watcher, you're saying. Last day is when, February twelfth?
So basically, it falls on the weekend, and. You know, so. I think Yvonne's the only one who's actually seen a poll watcher setup, basically, you have a couple of chairs across from. Where people are regist, are, are like, coming to us to fill out the cards and such, and that person is allowed to object to the people and say. You know, I don't believe they're a resident.
Right, right, I understand that point, I'm just saying, you said February twelfth last day, so what are we going to say is the last day to request it?
Sorry, sorry, so February nineteenth by the town charter. Is, is the deadline, so I guess, I guess we'll have to like, have it emailed in, or, you know, check the box in front of the town hall in the morning of the election, and see if somebody slipped, slipped a request in there.
Right.
One, this is an emergency election, I don't think this is going to be an issue, the other thing is, is they've had plenty of time to submit it.
Yes.
So I just, I say, keep that deadline as it is.
Okay, so that's. Where are we, uh, I can hardly see, deadline?
If you don't make it, if you don't make it Friday, Joe. Then it's just going to be sitting in, 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 a mailbox someplace until Tuesday morning, anyway.
Well, I think, I think we're just going to have to deal with the possibility that we got to rearrange the room a little bit. On the morning.
Yeah, and that's easy.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
No, but that's for submitting.
So, right, so it's just that you have to give the name of the poll watcher.
Okay.
Three days before.
Okay.
And it's supposed to be, give us time to know how many poll watchers there are going to be, there can only be one poll watcher per candidate, so we know. The maximum number that there could possibly be by that point, because, or you have to be a registered candidate to have a poll watcher.
Okay.
And so, we will know it, we will know. When the candidate registration deadline hits, as to how many. Seats we could potentially have for poll watchers.
Okay, and where do you put them?
So you put them, so that way they can see the people who are checking in. But they can't like, look over their shoulders directly, so they have historically been like, right near the door as people enter. But because of the six feet issue, oh, right, the six feet issue.
Well, and, and the ten people issue.
Well, so ten people. Yeah, because I would assume that they would stay for the count also.
Yeah.
Actually, that brings up another issue, which. I don't know if I have the document on this machine of the, what we had used as our special procedures for twenty twenty. One of the things that we had called for in that. I'm sorry, a friend is texting me about getting food, um, the friend's house that I'm at. So. The. Lost my train of thought there for a second, um, one of the things that we had said that we were going to do in twenty twenty, was that if we had more people than we were allowed to have in the room, because of the ten, ten-person limit. That was set by the declaration of emergency. Was that we would use the camera. Set for the, doing the, you know, video conferencing of the meetings. To then share it out to other locations within town hall, and declare that the town hall was our whole meeting room for people to observe. But. That video equipment does, either does not work, or that they can't broadcast it on the TVs that are in the lobby. John, do you know what that situation is, do you remember, we may have to talk to Kyle about that.
I think we should hold off on, on that kind of stuff, because number one, we don't know whether we're going to get any more candidates. Whether we have. Yeah, so let's go on with, um, maybe we can revisit, I think we just have to convene more regular, if everybody feels okay with that, I don't mind meeting more regular. Because everything is so fluid right now.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I think that issue would be important, depending on how many candidates we had.
Okay, um, well, it's, it's also matters with how many people come to observe the vote count.
Exactly.
That's, that's actually, that is what put us over the last time, and so we had three people right in the doorway. And we were able to get away with that, because two of them came from the same household. Officially, they were violating the rules that the commissioners had set for us, which said everyone had to stay six feet apart. But the rules that we were, that we had agreed to, as the Board of Supervisors elections, was you had to be six feet apart if you were not of the same household.
Right. But I like, I like your idea about you saying that the whole, uh, town hall is the polling place, and this, this, this is not that one little room.
Yeah, well, for the, for the counting purposes, you know, when we're doing the count, so that way we can then broadcast it to other places that people can see, and that. Camera that is on the wall is high enough that it would then be able to see the ballots as they're laid out, because I think what we ended up doing was. John had like a tablet of some sort that we put on a stand, but I don't know how visible the actual ballots were as we were working from that, because I didn't, like. Call in at the phone to see. You know, what the tablet could see.
Linda, weren't you, no, yeah, were you at home? I think Linda was at home watching, she could probably tell you what it looked like from home.
Linda, can you unmute and tell us what you saw?
Oh, she's, she's probably not home. She was going out tonight.
No, no, she's on.
Right now, it says.
Okay. Yeah.
She may have to leave later, but.
I don't, I don't, is her, I don't see her number up, so maybe she's just watching and not.
Uh, I see like, a little picture of a phone next to her, so I'm assuming that she is on the phone, and I do not see a scratch through it, so maybe she's unmuted? Alright, well, I guess that is something to potentially test of visibility of ballots for, for the.
Hello?
There she is.
I, I finally figured out how to unmute, sorry. I was at the vote count, the first vote count.
Okay, you were physically there, okay.
I was physically there.
Okay.
I didn't see that at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
That can be.
Wasn't really looking at the screen, I don't know if anybody had. Remoted into that or not. Alright. Deadline is been poll watcher, we already discussed the setup, and that Monday is, town offices are closed, so. That's why we're doing the setup on. The Friday.
Friday afternoon.
Alright, um, and then the special election day is the twenty-second, which is currently when there is a work session scheduled. And then on the twenty-third. Technically, the deadline is, why do I have T minus four days on, okay, I have a note in there that's bad. Post the election results at the town hall entrance, notify MML, Board of Elections, et cetera. Technically, that's after they've been certified. You know, because we shouldn't send it to MML until they've been certified, but. We are required to certify it by the Thursday after the election at noon. So. And that. Did not get moved when the day of the week changed, so we, you know, lost today in that. We then have a deadline to destroy all leftover surplus ballots within fourteen days after the election. But I think if it is challenged, we don't do that.
John, can you scroll down a little bit, please? Thank you.
And then the, uh, new commissioner takes office on the second Monday of the month following the election. Which I find to be weird, because it doesn't matter when in the month the election was, but. Deadline of a runoff election has to be within twenty-one days, so basically, if there is a tie. There has to be a runoff election within twenty-one days, so. Notice has to be given within seven days of the original election, then we have to schedule the runoff. And do ballots and all that other headache all over again. And then. Dave had in there that, you know, we're paid for our work on whatever day, and I don't know why, how he had set that date in his, when he had given us the schedule before. But I don't know if it's like, monthly employee, you know, because there are some folks who get paid once a month, and I don't know if it was just that date. We are not allowed to destroy the ballots and the recording of the votes. Until six months after, and then our term runs out, oh, and that's actually a mistake there, our term runs out on the second Tuesday in September of odd years. But they actually, when they changed the charter, they switched it to even years, so our term actually runs out this September, not next September. So.
Yep, there was a very small sigh of.
I suspect that's, alright. Okay, I've got a few notes I gotta make, okay, so we need to flip that to, that needs to be flipped to even years. The, I should probably add the notice of runoff. Runoff at plus seven. And I should probably make a note for the twenty-third, you know, February twenty-third. and I should probably make a note for the twenty-third, you know, February twenty-third one that, you know, not until certified. Until. Okay. So we've at least reviewed it, and lots of notes of what needs to change. Um, okay, any other comments about the schedule?
Um, the only thing that I have, Joe, is, is there actually a schedule for the day of the election for the board members and when they're gonna be there?
So that is a separate agenda item of how to handle the fourteen-hour day.
Okay. I have that already set up.
Well, so we'll talk about that then when we get to that one, so.
The only other thi- other question that I have, and I don't know if it's on, in your procedures, but um, are there emergency numbers or numbers, uh, for questions if we have questions during the election? And where is that kept, or how do we find that?
Uh, emergency numbers for what?
So if we come across a situation where we can't handle, we don't know how to handle it, um, are we gonna make it up, or is there someone that, someone who could guide us in what we should or could not do?
There's somebody.
Uh, we do have a number for the for county Board of Elections, but I, my understanding is that in this previous election that they had specifically paid the county for them to make sure that they were available during the entire period of our election and not just, um, you know, during their normal office hours, which I don't know that we had ever done that before. Um, that was something new to me, cuz I realized after we had the, um, the person, so we had, I, I did my normal spiel when someone said, hey, the card doesn't match my correct identity. And I said, hey, you should contact the county, and they stormed off after we had like, you know, prepped the ballot for them. Um, and I realized that, oh, wait, we had paid the county, and so I immediately called the county and informed them that we had this duplicate record because the person had a name change and, uh, gender no longer listed as binary that had been printed wrong. So, um, and they said they would trigger the mailing to resolve that issue.
Um, are, are there procedures that are documented on how to handle these types of things? Those are the things, those are the things that are gonna get us.
Yeah, that's, and that is, that is basically why the, the procedures document had, so as it was not in the recording, cuz we started right, right as we were organizing, there was a discussion of what triggered some of this stuff. And the county election boards was upset with the town for not having given them what they thought was sufficient notice before a special election that we had in twenty nineteen. Um, when we had a, we had our town president stepped down and had not given any sort of warning that they were going to do.
Right.
Um, which triggered a special election, and because that we had to have it within thirty to forty-five days, um, you know, I don't know if they were notified immediately about everything as, as the town clerk handled that aspect, but we were scrambling to get the special election done. And so, the county election board had a meeting, uh, I guess it was almost a training session day where they invited all of the municipalities of Prince George's County to come, and they told us what services they offered. Um, the questions about how the, uh, county's voter registration was handled because, um, you know, we have the issue in the charter that we've given, we've delegated some of the responsibility to them, and um, we are required as the Board of Election Supervisors to, um, to maintain, uh, you know, the, the election rolls. But they consider us to just be members of the public, and so all we can trigger is them sending a postcard out. And, you know, seeing whether or not it gets returned or not. Um, there was also the issue raised of like, we need to make sure that the post office understands that, you know, if one of these bounces for some reason, it must come back, or, or, you know, it drop, you know, we need it to maintain it, so. Um, uh, but they had suggested in that meeting that it was important for all the municipalities to document what their procedures were to ensure that we are consistent between voters. And they said, even if you are, you know, doing something wrong, it is worse if you are inconsistent because if you were to ask one person for identification and not ask another person, you need to have a justification for that so you don't get sued over, you know, trying to deny someone the right to vote.
Yeah, I have concern over one.
Yeah, um, over one of the procedures, or?
No, somebody that, um, did an absentee ballot and supposedly lived at the residence.
Yeah, we've, we've had some of those, so.
To you about that one.
Okay, um, we actually had some that we generated the absentee ballot forms for, but never actually distributed to them in that last election.
Yeah, the lady came back to give it signed, but then we never saw her after that.
Okay, so someone did come in for that one? Yeah, cuz we had a few that, um.
Yes.
That in, in, in my talking to them, there were at least four people that requested absentee ballots that, um, one of them was denied outright because we basically figured out that, look, he lives out of town. He like sent it in, he sent in the paperwork and like, this is blatantly out of town. There were three that gave in-town, um, addresses, and they were not on our roles, either the county roles or the town roles, and so I said, look, if you come down and sign the card that we would make you sign as a emergency voter authorization card to basically say, hey, I'm not committing election fraud, which unfortunately, the cards no longer say that on them. Uh, but you know, something to say, yes, I affirm that I really do live at this address, et cetera. Um, you know, then, then we could issue, issue them an absentee ballot, just like if they had come in on the day of the election and signed one of those, agreed to sign one of those cards.
Right.
Um, and maybe we should ask them for their ID when, when they have to do an emergency.
I asked when, um, Mr. Story was there about wanting to, you know, a- ask for IDs, and he blatantly said no. But that, that was then, but I, I like the idea of, of seeing their ID. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, so the, the way that the county does it right now, um, there are green cards that get inserted into, into their batch. So basically, they give us white cards, blue cards, and green cards.
Right.
And the white cards are people who have voted recently and are considered active voters. The blue cards are inactive voters, and they are people who have not voted in the past X number of elections, and I think it's two. Um, but I have seen, I think I have seen blue cards for folks that have voted in our election, but not theirs, so I don't know if our election triggers them to stay active. And at one, I've, I've only ever seen it for one election when they gave us green cards. And it turns out what those are is people who have never voted in any election. You know, it's like they are new voters. They have not confirmed their identity, you know, they filled out the paperwork to be a voter, and so they do ask those people for identification just to verify. You know, there is, there is some point where they actually look at the ID card for someone before they start voting.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can discuss that stuff when going over the procedures if we want, you know. I, I think it makes sense, you know, we can say, you know, on the green cards, or, you know, if you've gotta do a emergency voter authorization, then you gotta show some proof of residence, whether it's an ID card or a utility bill with your name on it, which of course means only one person at that household is gonna have one in their name. Um, but, you know, that's, well, we can, we can cover that with procedures.
Okay.
Um. All right, uh, anything else scheduling-wise? Why did we get on this topic anyway? Was there something else that I missed covering?
You.
Uh, it, it started with me asking about emergencies and, you know, the runoff.
Okay, right, okay, so for the emergencies, um, county elections, but of course, they close at like four-thirty. Um, I'm not sure who else we would call for anything, um. I mean, they normally close at four-thirty, but we can contract with them to have them stay open until eight or whatever we need.
I know we've had them stay open till the election was over.
Yeah, they, they did that for us this last election. I don't know how often that has been done in the past.
It's been done before.
Okay, it has been done before, okay.
Who makes that request?
Now.
Who, who makes that request?
The town clerk makes the request at the county, and that has already been taken care of. That is done.
Right.
All right.
So they will be available to you until the close of the election.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, any, are there any other emergencies you can think of that we might need to call somebody? Okay, hearing none, uh, any other comments on the schedule before we move on? All right, uh, next item is forms to be updated, and the only form that I actually have updated so far, which I do not have in front of me to show you because it's on my laptop, is the, um, absentee request form, and let me switch back to Zoom, um, which unfortunately is not in the packet, uh, there was the form that we looked, that I, I had modified. Um, um, was that one, two meetings ago? I guess that I had like rearranged the, the form slightly so that with the signature line was all the way at the bottom because we had a few people who missed signing the absentee request form cuz it was like mixed in in the middle.
Right.
I also don't know, well, that, that form got much busier a few elections ago when all of the state election law stuff got put onto there, but as the state election law doesn't apply to us, I don't know if we truly need that, but the little town lawyer wants us to have it in there, so. Um.
So are we, are we generating these forms, and can we, where they have to have signatures, just highlight those lines so that it brings it out that that's something they need to address if you had like a yellow.
I mean, potentially, we could put that in bold or something. I moved it down to the bottom, um. Uh.
And that was, was that for the absentee ballot?
That was, yeah, um. So, uh, um, yes, I'll, let me, I, I don't know how much charge I have on my battery, so I wanted to kinda hold off until I had to start my laptop up and try and send everything in bulk.
What do you want me to do, Joe? I can do it. What do you want me to do?
Well, no, 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 there was a, it was like a rich text format file that John had sent. And actually, I guess I need to do it by, before the end of the meeting because it needs to get posted online because they, they can start requesting absentee ballots starting tomorrow. Um, so, uh, I rearranged it. I, I'm pretty sure we talked about it two meetings ago, um, but, uh, I was also debating on whether or not we should have something in there for whether or not they were intending to mail it back to us, so that would, maybe we could not stamp for postage when we don't need to. You know, return postage, aren't it? Um, but, you know, without, without removing or significantly reducing the size of the information at the top of it, which has all of the, um, legally, the stuff about the state law, um, uh, election ballot stuff, um, I didn't want to, yeah, uh, basically, everything was gonna get really, really tiny for me to give enough space to like, start requesting more information from people when they requested their absentee ballot. So, um, I'll, I'll have to send that out to people. Uh, I guess I need to do it now cuz that's one that we need to have done today, so let me start up my laptop real quick and send that to everyone, uh. Can we do this via email, or should I send it, I guess if I send it to John, is there any way that you can then switch to that as it's not part of the existing presentation, John?
I can do that for you.
Okay, let me.
That makes sense, Joe, to send it to John, and John can send it out.
Uh. Uh, PDF good?
Yes, for me, fine.
Yeah, that's fine, perfect, thank you.
Right. I'm losing all sorts of keys. It doesn't wanna type on my laptop. All right, uh, clerk. Yes. Where did I just save that to? Sorry about this, everybody. Just go ahead and chat among yourselves while I find where I just put that.
Patty.
And then.
Yes.
Joe said chat among ourselves. Okay, I have, I have a question for you.
Uh-huh.
It's very personal, but we're all, we're all friends here.
Uh, are you? You better not ask me my late, you better not ask me my weight, and we're all right.
I'm with you.
No, I won't ask that, uh, it's a concern, are, are you hiring, um, entry level people?
At, where, where I work?
Uh-huh.
Um, we, we are mostly system admin
Mm-hmm.
and programmers.
Okay, so you wouldn't be working with entry level IT people.
Um, so, at that, um, we do have a help desk who, um, they monitor our satellite data and our applications.
Yes.
And that's probably the, um, that's, that's probably the, the most entry level that we have.
Yes.
Technical, and they have a, a significant training for that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to, you know, because you are monitoring satellite data. Um, but that's probably the, the most entry level we have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I don't.
So, there's something that you might wanna consider is that as the James Webb successfully launched, they're actually doing some hiring right now. Um, also, if this is someone who is still in college or high school, um, there tend to be a lot of internship programs over the summer.
And he, he's getting into it, uh, it's my grandson, and he's taken classes, got certified, and now he's looking for jobs. But of course, he has no experience, so he's entry level.
Oh, a lot, a lot of the internship programs at NASA, at least, I don't know about it, NOAA, are paid, and being a minority helps in the placement. They specifically have some minority, um, you know, internship stuff. So that might be another route to go, and those, and for the summer interns, you have to have like your paperwork in by like March or April.
Okay, if you email me his CB.
Okay.
I can certainly push that over to our contractor management. Um, because I certainly, we have, we have development, we have operations, we have sustainment, we have different levels across our, our mission. Um, so there's a good possibility that maybe somebody outside of my task order uh, that may be doing that, so I can certainly provide the CB to our management and see if they're interested. It won't hurt.
Okay, thank you, Patty. I'll, I'll do that.
And if he's, and if he's up towards Baltimore, I would definitely check out, I think it's called the Space Telescope Institute. It's the folks who did the Hubble, and now they're doing the James Webb.
Okay, I'll, I'll let him know. He's, he lives with me, so I don't know whether he wants to go
No.
too far.
Well, I'm guessing a lot of people are going to be doing teller work type stuff at the beginning. I just don't, I, I don't know how. Yeah, and they might not be doing as much internship type stuff because of the pandemic. Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm through.
Well, I've, I've sent the, the file off and it looks like John has it up. So, um, all right, uh, basically it was just a change in it. So, um, ineligible voter may vote by absentee in a town election for any reason pursuant to section four one oh eight of the local government, Maryland Local Government Article. They don't actually consider municipality to be a local government though. Um, so I don't know if we need to have that language in there. Um, yeah, as early as thirty days out prior to the election. Um, yeah, uh, I mean, this is, this is all language. It's staying the same. The only thing that changes is the February part. If we scroll down to the bottom or the actual block, I guess, I guess the one that says important, I did change the formatting of that a little bit to kind of show, you know, make it not all one line. So it's clearly this or that or this of how to, how to apply. Um, I think I also gave what the address of was of Town Hall. Um, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep, keep going all the way to the bottom, John. Yeah, so I, I just did all this and I guess I can bold the signature of registered voter and date to make sure that one blatantly like, you really need to give us this stuff.
Hey, Joe, at the beginning of that, that's a thirty days, but, um, this specific one, maybe we need to have a second one for special elections so that we have it documented because I don't want it to say thirty days out for this and know that we're not going to be thirty days out for an absentee ballot.
Well, it's when they're allowed to start applying for an absentee ballot.
Oh, okay.
So it's not, so the deadline, so the deadline is then when they can no longer use this form and and it's, it's messy because the town's charter has the issue of, well, it's ten days before the election unless it's for a special reason, but we're not allowed to ask what that reason is. So does that still apply? And we have given issued absentee ballots on the day of the election before.
Yes.
You know, for somebody in the hospital. So it didn't come back in time, but we issued it. Um, yeah, we also had somebody one time return an absentee ballot envelope without an actual ballot in it.
Yeah, what can you do, huh?
We tried calling them to let them know and they didn't get back to us in time because we didn't, we were processing it like a half an hour before the end of the election. We're like, if you can get this to us, we'll take it. But yeah, that was, that was one of those ones of hope that the margin of victory is not within the number of issues that you had during the day. And luckily it was not.
So this is what would be, you're saying to us that this is what you will be printing. We will be printing this in-house, uh, these absentee ballots. Okay.
Yeah, so, um, unless, unless the, um, uh, the other printer can turn them around faster because county, county fast, basically, the way that they do perforation jobs, they had to hand feed them through a perforator each one. And so, you know, the, the place that was up at, well, actually absentee ballots don't have a perf. So, um, what I had actually done with county fast for the last election was, um, the absentee ballots, they just trimmed rather than perf them. And so I got, you know, ten or twelve from them right at the beginning, you know, because they printed them within a day. And, you know, they can, they can cut a stack of two hundred of them and, you know, it's lining up five minutes. Here's your stack. Um, so she just cut some for me in advance and then did the perf and I picked those up later. And so I was able to start sending out absentee ballots like a day or two after the candidate registration deadline. Um, but, uh, I, I did get a quote from her of what it would cost her to run them. And I think it was a hundred and forty dollars and the one up in, uh, the, where was that? Um, there was another one that was further north in the county that was a hundred and ten, I think, that John had sent out last week or earlier this week.
So that was HW printing.
Yeah. But, but as you don't need the perf, we can do the absentees in-house. We just have to make sure that whoever is trimming them goes slow, you know, do one at a time. Don't try to rush them or you'll have issues.
Oh, okay. Sounds good to, to do it in-house. I don't think we'll have that many.
Yeah, because, uh, so I think our high during the pandemic has been twenty-six, which, when you consider that the number of people who vote is around eighty,
Mm hmm.
you know, eighty to a hundred and ten, I think, I think our, the most that we have ever had vote in an election in the last twenty years has been somewhere around a hundred and thirty. And that was when the firefighters got voted out.
Joe, is there, is there anything in this document that you're getting ready to print? That is specific to the election or is there stuff in there?
The date, just the date in it because it says February twenty-second in a couple of places.
It can, can that be blanked out?
And made generic?
Yeah.
Uh, potentially, um, I don't know if there is a legal reason for having that, just to make sure that someone's, you know, we don't get new ones mixed up with old ones. Um, I, I wouldn't have an issue with it, you know, if it was like one spot at the top or something rather than, because I think it's in three places right now. But for this, for this one, I, I say, don't worry about it. You know, if people are okay with having it in there, we can, we can trim that out for next time. That'll give us another line or two that we can then use for the information to possibly ask them for the, hey, do we need to stamp this return for postage for you or not? You know, and save the fifty cents or whatever it is that, you know.
And do these go out postage already done?
So, okay, so, um, it's, I, I've written up what the absentee stuff is in the procedures. So I don't know if we want to cover that.
Okay, well, then look, no, I'll just wait. I'm fine.
Okay. Um, so do you want to table this form until we've done the procedures of what actually happens with the absentee ballots, then come back to?
I thought you, I thought you couldn't table this because this has got to go to print tomorrow.
Okay, so are there any objections to this at the current point? We can raise if there are any objections to it later when we get to the actual procedure stuff.
Okay, I, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no objection.
Okay. Uh, John, could you switch us back to the packet?
Will do. So the question I have is this form approved by you to put on the website?
Uh, at the current state, yes.
Okay.
Um, and we may revise that before the end of the meeting if we decide that there's something of an issue. So this has, I, I want to say that this has all of the same blanks that were in the old form, but I rearranged the, the thing. I'd have to look at the old form to see exactly how I modified it.
Okay, I just want to verify if this is approved because we've got to get that up tonight.
Right, um.
And can you make sure, John, can you send that out to us now so we can get a peek out of it? Because I mean, you're just throwing it up on the screen and it's kind of hard to go through everything.
Yes, I can email it all to all of you right now.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess if we have to make changes to the form, we can do it, you know, they're still allowed to apply. And if they give us the old form, that's still, you know, so long as it's not something horribly wrong with it.
Okay.
You know, I'm pretty sure it mentions that, you know, you have to have, well, there is another form that goes along with the absentee form. Well, there's, there are four forms related to absentee ballots. There is, one of them is the absentee ballot request. There is then a separate emergency absentee ballot request that does not give the option for mailing it out and assumes that you have an agent. Because it's like someone else is coming in to say, hey, this person is in the hospital. Um, and I, I need to get a ballot for them. And I guess that itself is a much longer conversation than I'm really prepared to have tonight because there's the question about what happens if someone requests an absentee ballot in your name? And then we flag you as already being issued an absentee ballot and then you try to come in and vote in person. So, um, we'll.
Would you have already pulled their card?
So, so basically the way that, that, um, town ordinance, what is it, two thousand one oh four, I think it is, the one that covers elections says that if we issue you an absentee ballot, then you have to vote by absentee. You cannot vote by regular ballot.
Right, that's what I thought.
Right. And so we pull their, we pull their card out of the box for anybody who's been issued an absentee ballot. And so if somebody does an emergency absentee ballot, which they don't have to do in person because someone can act as their agent to do it, that is a potential opportunity for abuse that someone could say, hey, I'm an agent. I'm going to request absentee ballots for these thirty people. Those people then come in, they want to vote and it's like, oh no, we've already issued you an absentee ballot. And they're like, what the hell? And that's probably one of those things that we should have discussed today, closed meeting. I don't know.
Do you want to put an arrow where the signature line is so that people don't miss the signature line? Because we could do that.
Um, we could do that or I could make it bold. I still can, here, let me. Uh, sorry, that's bold and maybe, well, after a while I start reducing the size of the, the blank available. I like making it bold if I make it larger sized or anything like that. Um, um, trying to think of, is there any other tricks that people, I mean, arrow? Do you have a way to add an arrow to a PDF? Because I don't know how to do that with what I'm using. John, do you have, have a way to put an arrow on there?
Yeah, I can do it together. I can do that for you.
Okay, so I will, I will generate another PDF and send that to you and then you can add an arrow. Um, I guess, let me.
Send you all the forms. So the board of elections has been sent the absentee ballot form that Joe sent me.
Okay, um. Yeah, I also did wonder about the, one of them is circles, circle one, and one of them is check off here, which I'm not a fan of mixing that sort of stuff in there, but um, uh, clerk. I lose C being able to type from my keyboard. Yeah, because of course on, on my laptop also, the keyboard's been acting up. So there's like three letters now that I can't actually type.
I see what you say, uh, about it being so busy because of all this language. Can you put this on the back?
Uh, I guess we could, we could have it as a two-page document. Um, I would say if we do that, that we put out this version first tonight and then potentially we revise it. And then we have a alternate version that is still acceptable rather than try to figure out everything tonight for it. Any, any objection?
I, I have no objection to that.
Uh, all right, choose that. All right, John, that should have just gotten sent off. So, um, I guess we are, we are, we are approving this as one potential version of the form that will be acceptable. And whether or not we come up with another version is, is up for later.
Can you all make a motion and vote for that, please?
So, uh, uh, do I, do I hear a motion to approve this form either with or without an arrow being added by John? Um, as, as an acceptable version of the absentee ballot request form? Someone just said, so moved.
So what did we say? Make a motion? I make a motion.
Okay, so, so, uh, for parliamentary procedure, um, when I say, do I hear a request for a motion to X? Someone just has to then say, so moved, and then someone else has to second.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yvonne, do we have an aye? We may have lost Yvonne. However, we did get three to, uh, at least pass the, the motion.
And I'll get it posted. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next in our bundle of fun. Um, so we still do have some more forms. I do not have them ready tonight to look at. Um, the, the other forms for the most part are, other than the, you know, candidate form. Oh, right, the, uh, candidate registration form. Uh, John, has that been posted? The candidate packet?
It has not because I was waiting on you all to decide, uh, what they did, what the deadline is going to be. So you have now made the seven, so I will update the packet.
Okay, yes, we are good with that. So, yes, uh, so I will move that we will have John update the existing packet to say that the deadline is February seventh and uh, remove any language if it mentioned specifically at close of business. Um, and then he can post that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Evelyn and Patty. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we still don't have Yvonne, but that at least gives us the three.
All right, we'll get it posted. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, yeah, the other, the other, uh, absentee forms are basically, so there is a affidavit slash instruction sheet that tells them how to handle, um, the absentee ballot and, and, you know, basically what they do and they have to sign that. Um, potentially, there's also an agent sheet, which I guess that is something that could have come up with the um, uh, absentee ballot form of do you need assistance in? You know, is someone else going to be picking this up for you? Or is someone else, basically, is someone else going to be handling your ballot, whether it's because you need help in filling it out? Or they're going to drop it off for you or pick it up for you. There should be an agent form associated with that to say that someone else has touched your ballot. Um, uh, but that is an acceptable form of the, the absentee form. So we're not going to get into that right now. Um, I guess we could put that as part of the emergency one because there's definitely the absentee is stuff or agent stuff on there. Um, so there's the instruction form, there's the, um, which is the instructions are the sheet that you also sign to say, I am the one who completed this ballot. And then we compare the signatures to the, you know, who requested it to the, who submitted it and make sure they match. Um, and we probably have to adjust the instructions because there's normally comments of like, this is the white envelope. This is the manila envelope that you, you use when sending stuff back. Um, all right, but we can't issue them until after the candidate deadline. So that doesn't have to be dealt with until February seventh.
Um, what about the emergency, um, the emergency absentee ballot?
So, right now, they shouldn't need it until we start getting closer when you have to have the agent involved. So that one can probably also wait until February seventh. But that one, we should probably, we do need to review that one and I don't have a copy of that one in front of me. And I don't think, I don't believe that one is posted to the town's website. So I would probably need to get the copy from John.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sure, um, uh, I also mentioned some other forms that, a couple of them that don't actually exist in the procedures. And we can discuss whether or not we need to have those forms or not, but none of them we need right now. All right, um, review of any notices slash mailings were similar. Uh, there was going to be a postcard, I There was going to be a postcard, I think, sent out for the last election. I don't know what the status of that is, John?
Um, the postcards, the county is doing ca- um cards that will go out for the February twenty-second um date.
Okay.
They are, they actually craft that for us, so that's actually by them. So, and the language is them. So, um, those will be approved probably, I would say. With very shortly and we'll get that done, but that will be.
So there was that, the, the postcard that was sent from the town at the last election, um, do we? Do people feel that we need to do that again? Cause we were. Told to keep the budget in check, but I don't know, like. I don't even know what sort of lead time they need to get that done. And whether or not, you know, how much time that's actually give people, cause my main concern would be letting people know that we need candidates to register.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What, did they give you a budget?
No. I have.
They still haven't?
I have not seen any budget.
Currently, from what I've understand, this is what I've been told, the board of elections supervisors is over budget. So.
How do I go budget?
So the plan is, is to try to do everything more or less on a savings. Um, for the special election. So that is what I've been told.
So, so my, my understanding is that the line item that was.
Over budget.
So, so basically the, the budget that was, was approved when they did the. You know, budget back in last June. Uh, was somewhere around twelve hundred dollars. And the cost of running the election. Uh. Back in November was closer to two thousand dollars. And. I have not seen that full breakdown because I, so I don't know. You know, how much of that was the mailing that was sent out? How much of that was the, you know, I voted buttons? Um.
I'm sure a lot of that also had to do with the fact that I don't think they expected. Five people working thirteen to fourteen hours either.
Well, right, that's, that's another point, is that when the budget was approved. They did not have, they had not yet changed the charter that. We were going to have more, you know, we were gonna have longer hours and everything else, but realistically, um, our. So our day would normally would have started at one o'clock by starting at seven, that tech darn, six hours for everyone?
I actually started at six, six to thirty.
That's true, well, but we would have started a little bit early anyway.
Right.
We would, would have started before one o'clock, so.
Right.
It added so many hours to our day. I guess, actually, what would have been more significant is the fact that we did the setup the day before because. Normally, we would have, you know, all showed up around eleven and done the setup then, but.
Right, and we set up the night before.
Right, we also had to do a lot more processing of absentee ballots than usual, um.
Right.
We also did the two trainings for election judges because we hadn't ever done that before. It had always been just roped, rolled into the. You know, it was just the board of supervisor elections. There was a lot more.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff that happened because of the change to the charter and the. And that. Had not been planned for when they set their budget.
And then don't forget, you also had meals the day of the election.
Well, that, that in, in some ways was because of the longer day, because they had done dinner for us before, but they never had to do lunch.
Right.
So.
Just bring our own lunch.
And more people, yeah. So. Well, well, that also, um, when we actually get to the discussion of the longer day, it might make sense for us to go home for lunch because number one. You know, the, taking the masks off in front of other people and all that with.
Yes.
You know, I don't, it's possible that we'll be mostly past Omicron by then, but it's better safe than sorry.
We could go to the kitchen.
Yep.
So, John, have they already ordered the plastic?
It's an expensive affair.
Well, so that, that might, so, so um Kyle had informed me. That they already have certain PPE available to us. And I assume that we would be taking the plastic that is currently. Blocking in Lucy unless they have other stuff in addition to that.
That's the only plastic we have.
Okay.
What Lucy is.
Yeah.
There is no other plastic.
Okay.
Um, Yvonne, you said you've already got a schedule. How many people are in that, how many board, uh, board members? Are in, in the, in the area at any given time?
Okay. Three.
So there's always gonna be three at any given time?
Right, and we need that.
Yeah, I need to talk to Joe about that, but um.
We, we need three people for the normal operation of the elections. If we're gonna run it as normal.
And that's what we're.
You know, then, because you need to have at least two people with the ballot box at all times. You can't leave.
Right.
One person there and having three gives you the flexibility that someone can go to the bathroom.
Right, and that's what I have, um, I just, uh. Wasn't sure. I don't want you overdoing it.
Right.
Um, I don't want you.
Nobody should be working a fourteen-hour day.
You know.
Right, agreed.
Be there.
Yeah, so, so. We do have the question of. Do we need everyone there to? With, well, we'll handle that when we get to the wa- uh, agenda item about managing a fourteen-hour day.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said.
Or, or should we do that one earlier? Should we? Change the order or, we've already had the review of the agenda. Can we change that now?
Now, Joe, just keep going.
Yeah, I was gonna say, keep going.
Alright, so, uh. The election procedures document next, well, okay, so notices, mailings are similar. I guess we are not doing the postcards, so that will save us some money. Um. We're doing. Sorry, what was that?
I was gonna say, the um sandwich boards have gone out around town. And those guys approve your schedule, those sandwich boards will also be updated with the updated schedule.
Okay.
So that is something that they really wanna make sure that they're promoted because of the postcards.
Alright, so.
Everyone is going to be sent a postcard from the town that's a registered voter.
So I don't know what sort of flexibility you have in there. My understanding is that you have a printer that can. Put something waterproof out. Um, I would request that, that initially you have something saying. You know, here's when the, the, the election is and here's when the candidate filing deadline is. And then we can, once we've, that's passed, we can change to whatever other deadlines we need, but, um. There were. There were some yard signs that have been put out for events in town before that had. So much information, the text was just too small for someone to be able to read unless they like stopped right in front of the sign. And took a few minutes to read it, though. Um, I think it's important that we keep a nice, large font size and not too much information at any one time out there. So. Um.
Joe, uh, can I ask this question? Are the procedures for the town upper Marlboro elections, is that for, just for the supervisors, right? It's, it's not for the residents?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's a, it's a document that the resident should be able to see if they, they ask.
Yes.
Um, but, uh, yeah, it's, it is, it is the, the. Thing that the county wanted us to have, so that way. You know, we make sure that we are being consistent between every person in how we run the election.
Because I'm thinking it's, it's uh. Seven eighteen now and we, and the, I think the most important thing is going over the. Uh, staffing of the election day.
Okay, so how about this? We shall, uh. I guess, I don't know if I need a motion for this, um, do I hear a motion to readjust the agenda to manage the fourteen-hour day first? Or next?
So move. Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Alright, all in favor, um, okay, so. So the fourteen-hour day, um. We are still gonna need all five of us there. Um, when we do the counting.
Exactly.
So, um. Uh, I have already purchased election, uh, seals that are supposed to be, I have not tested them. They're supposed to be that you put them on and they. Peel off cleanly, but the sticker itself is damaged as opposed to leaving something behind on the, the box. So that way we can. Feel confident that we have sealed the ballot box. You know, and that nobody's been in it while we're, you know, not. All of us are standing there, cause normally we would have the three election judges or. All of the election judges there from the beginning of when it got sealed to the end. So. Um. You know, I don't, I don't know if. I would be comfortable with having, you know, three people sign off, aren't here, this is the seal number that went on. I don't know if everyone else feels okay with that, or if we all need to be there at the beginning of the day to see what the seal is that's placed.
I think you only need one person and you should write it down and have that person just sign it so they agree.
Well, I, I think it should be at least two people.
Yeah, I think it should be at least two.
Right, have one person actually put the seal on and both of you sign that you have sealed it.
Yeah.
So, so that you have two people that say, yeah, it's been done.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have three people in there at all times, so there would be three people then to open, so I think.
Right.
Get all three people to sign. So. That seem reasonable?
Yeah, that's, yeah, if, if, if it's gonna be all three, three people at a time, yeah, all three sign.
Yeah, and then we can, after, after we finish the count and stuff, we can then seal whatever. You know, materials that need to be saved, we can seal those boxes and have just. You know, we can either do the three or if we're all five there, we can all just sign it then, and then. Um, I'm assuming that we would have, uh. You know, as things have to be disposed of at different times, you know, we could seal the stuff that needs to be saved for six months separately from the stuff that needs to be. You know, destroyed in fourteen days. So.
Okay.
Uh, and, and it's possible that also, um, we might wanna make duplicates of some of the stuff, so that way there's like. Um. Our counts, so we are, we are required to save the count of the election for six months out, whether or not we wanna like. You know, save our individual tally sheets, like make a copy of them, so that way there's one copy that's available for inspection. But then there's another copy that's sealed away. So. We could probably discuss that with the procedures document, I think. Um. Yeah, uh. Guess the other, the other big one that might be more significant in terms of just, um. Timing wise. Is the discussion of, of who's available to handle the absentee ballots?
Okay, so I would be available.
Okay. Okay. Good, cause I'm not sure that I'm gonna be available this time around for, through February.
Day, that day will be. What day is that? That's why I told you before I would do it.
Yeah, so basically. Yeah, we've had, we've had issues, cause Yvonne, you had said for the twenty, for, if we'd had the. If we've been dealing with it last week, you'd ask me to cover, but, um, so basically what, what comes up is.
I'm gonna do it.
Okay, good.
Okay, but Yvonne, you don't want to do it by yourself. Well, they, they just come in at, at. Not like they all come in at one time.
Right, so what happens is, um, there will be.
Might be there too.
However, there will be however many forms have been, have been applied for before we actually know who the candidates are, you know, because they're allowed to apply thirty days out. So, once we actually. Have the candidates and we've set the ballot. Then we can start at least sending those out, but then they trickle in. Up to the week before the election usually, and then we might have some emergency ones at the last minute.
I, I thought I read somewhere in the ordinance that the town clerk was collecting them and they delivered the absentee ballots the day of the voting.
Okay, so that's two things. So there is the absentee ballot request forms.
Okay.
Then the packet gets assembled and sent out to the person, then they. Take out the outer envelope, sign the form in there, fill out their ballot, follow the instructions to pack it back up to send to us. And that's what they collect to then give to us on the day of the election, what the town clerk collects. So there's two. Two separate things. There is the absentee ballot request form processing. To actually send the absentee ballot to the person, and then there is the return of the absentee ballot, which the town clerk then holds on to for us. Until the day of the election.
So you're just saying that o- only one person needs to do.
Uh, I think that's actually something in the procedures of, do we wanna make rules of how many people handle blank ballots at the time? Cause I think it is good to ha- make sure, you know, we set a policy of. You know, if we're messing with the already voted ballots for some reason, we need to have a second person there.
Yeah.
So, the absentee ballots, do you count them at the beginning or the end?
So we have been counting them at the end in the past, um, and I think that's what the procedures document, because the, I wrote the procedures document. As, basically, this is the way we've been doing it when I first wrote it, and there are a few things that are now. You know, hey, here are some things that I, I'd like to change. Um, but. Because we had that issue of, you know, it's half an hour before the end of the election and we found out that someone had. You know, screwed up and, you know, either, I think we had one that they missed signing, we've had another one where they like. The ba- the ballot wasn't in the envelope at all. Um, you know, if we wanna give time to try to get that fixed, then we need to do that a little bit earlier. So, they're still allowed to give it to us.
Always.
All the way up until eight o'clock. They're allowed to drop off an absentee ballot.
Hmm. A- and Joe picked up some and I, I did the last time. I delivered one and picked it back up.
Yep, yeah, and I, I, I took a few of them because like people had missed signing the form. I actually. Went to people's houses with the form and like, if you sign this, I will give you your absentee ballot.
Um. I hate to say this, but that's kinda like special services.
Well, well, this, this one man was, i- it was sick, the one person that I did.
Yep.
A- and now he's in the hospital. Um, yeah. Actually, he's in rehab somewhere.
So.
No, I knew he wanted to vote and I just wanted to make sure that was gonna get to him.
Yeah, um, we may. So. There is the issue of the agent form is that, um, if someone requires assistance in the polling place. So basically, if anyone comes in to help the person who is not under eighteen years old. Cause you were allowed to have like your kids with you when you were voting. Um. But if someone who is themselves a red, a, a eligible voter. Is not allowed to go back into the polling place with you unless they are specifically there to assist you in completing your ballot. And then they have to have an agent for, and there is, um. I think for the, the agent form, it says that you can, it cannot be a. Uh, election judge. You know, we're not allowed to go back into the poll, into the, the place with you, and I think that's. In the town ordinance two thousand one oh four, but for the case of. Dropping off an absentee ballot and collecting an absentee ballot. You know, are. Are supervisors allowed to do that if we don't ever touch? You know, the actual marked ballot? I would be okay with it. I don't know how other people feel.
I li- I actually delivered it to him and then his wife brought it back. But now I have this question that, um. He's in a northern home.
Right, and so I think.
Right now, I believe.
I think they have to do the. Um, agent form to then have his wife. You know, pick up the absentee ballot and drop it off. Is, is how I would do it. Whether, whether we specifically use the emergency ballot form for that is like, this is the one who needs it. Cause I think, I wanna say the emergency. Emergency absentee ballot request does not actually require the voter's signature on it. Because of the case of. Well, maybe it does. You know, we had that question.
They shouldn't be able to sign.
Yeah.
Right.
It ba- basically, I guess, I guess the signature is on there, but like, if someone's in the hospital the day of, that means that someone has to come. Get the emergency form, go to the hospital, get the person to sign it, you know, to make the request. Come back, drop off the request. We pack up the absentee ballot for them, they then go back out.
Right.
You know, get it done and then bring it back to us with the signed and such. So, it could be a, like, multi-hour ordeal to do.
Right, okay. I was just asking.
Yeah. I think that dropping them off is, is a reasonable service that we can offer, especially. You know, with the town hall actively closed.
Exactly.
You know, that, I mean, I, I, I called up people to say. Hey, would you prefer me to drop this in the mail or, or, or drop it off in person? And a lot of them said, just drop it in the mail.
So, Joe, I don't know what the liability for the town is for you to do that. I would, I would be careful. With you, I know we're not allowed to drive government stuff around in our personal vehicles. Without signing out, you know, taking that liability off of.
When I was fifteen, I walked off with top secret documents, not knowing it. They had, they had put the, maybe it was just secret, but, um, I was a runner at the Pentagon for a summer. And they had put it in the outbox to like go between offices and I would like come over and get stuff and just run it between offices. And, uh, yeah, yeah, it turned out that I had picked up secret stuff without knowing it.
I'm just saying, u- us doing any personal services like that, Joe has, you'd have to check with the town to make sure they're, they're liable for that. If you get in an accident, I just say, if you get in an accident on your way, who's liable for that? Cuz you were, you were doing official duty. That's not documented anywhere that we're supposed to do.
So, can I say, is this something that we need to fresh out right now? Or do we need to see who's going to be there during that fourteen hour day?
Also, keep in mind, there, we can use the police insert. Just saying.
I would avoid using the police for this, and the reason is that there is. One of the state election laws thing has this thing about. People in uniform and police officers are like not supposed to be near the polling place unless, you know, under certain, certain conditions. And. Yeah, cuz they don't want it to look like they're intimidating. Like if a police officer is specifically there as. Assigned to the polling place or, you know, be called in because of an incident at the polling place, that's okay. But they don't want police officers just milling around and stuff and uniformed people in general, people. Who have firearms. And.
It triggers.
Yeah, so, um. I, I don't know if, I mean, like. Public Works maybe, but I remember back in the days of Helen Ford. She would, she, she was actually furious. When she found out that the town clerk was packing the absentee ballots. Because when I, when I did the elections in two thousand two and two thousand four. Like, the clerk never touched a ballot. Whether it was blank or not, like the town staff, even, even the materials from county elections. I was the one to pick up rather than sending public works to pick it up.
Well, we have five board supervisors, can't the five of us work out this fourteen hour day?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, all right, so the fourteen hour day thing, um, I don't know if. So I think, I think we should schedule so that way we don't have more than three people aren't at the time, but because of COVID. I think that we need some flexibility, so it's like we might, you know, whatever Yvonne has come up with of, you know, here's how to allocate hours and. You know, maybe we talk to some people, if some people would rather have mornings versus afternoons or whatever.
That's what I was gonna do.
I am definitely not a morning person.
You know, we're, we're all right within walking distance except for me, I can't walk. But, uh, as you know, if we need, we, we call you, you can come back, be there in five minutes or whatever.
And, and something else though is that I would suggest that, um, I've been told that the town hall has, uh. COVID tests, and I would suggest that we all get one of the, you know, they have the take home COVID tests, that we all take them home. And the Monday before, we all test ourselves, and if any of us show up as positive, it's like. We have to readjust the schedule.
Right.
You know, around that person, so that person, you know, whether. Whether we remove them entirely from the count or they have to do the count remotely, I, I don't know, but I think.
Okay, that goes with pandemic precautions, right? You have on the agenda, that, that's a very good point, but I would, I'd like to hear what Yvonne says so we can get scheduled. And, and work our, our schedule from what Yvonne is suggesting.
Right, well, I was gonna keep us all. Working. The, the. The full time, the, the three of, what, you and me. But I didn't want Joe doing it all the time, and then when they were talking about the budget, so I just thought, well, I checked it. But it seems like you get there and then you turn around and go back if we work it in shifts of, uh, three hours.
I don't, I don't know that necessarily needs to be three hours. It could be something like, hey, we swap, we start swapping around at lunchtime. Or we swap around at dinner to give people a chance to go home, it's get a meal.
You know, eat in it, go to the kitchen and we can eat so we can keep it like we did before, the, uh, seven to, um. Say, I did one, but we could say seven to two and then have two to, um, eight. Or actually, that'll end up being nine. And just schedule us all that way.
So, two, seven hour shifts each? And then we all come back at, we all come back at eight?
Yes, the, the ones that aren't there come back at eight.
Wait, two seven hour shifts each would be fourteen hours each, which is the whole day.
Right. That's, that's how I, I had done it originally, and then I thought, all right, except talked about the money, okay. So we only work three hour shifts. I mean, you know, you'll, you'll work three hours and then you might have to come back later.
All right, wait, let me, let me just do some quick math, uh, so, so, so it's seven until eight. So it's thirteen hours coverage that we need times three people. So that's thirty-nine hours, there are five of us, which means we all need to work about eight hours.
Right.
So.
You know, you can, we, we can do it straight or we can break it up.
Yeah, we can do it as four and four, uh, realistically, like, you know, someone comes back right at eight, and it's possible that we might want. You know, more people around at the seven o'clock hour for whatever, like the. Processing of the absentee ballots.
So you guys have done this, when was it dead?
When was it dead?
Honestly, this last one, yeah, this last one, because, I mean, this was the first time that we had a. Full twelve hour, and I do not have those numbers in front of me. I think those got. Put with the, the, um. We were keeping track of like what the number of issued ballots was at various times of the day.
I'm just gonna throw this out there. I'm making an assumption that you're gonna have the most people in the morning before they go to work.
No.
And then at the end after work.
So honestly, the busy time is, is right as, as people get off work. That is like our busiest time of the day.
That's what I was thinking, around four, between three and four on out, right?
No, no, like. Four to six is our busy period, and by busy period, I mean like there might be two people in there at the same time. We've had, sorry, what was that?
I was gonna say, don't forget your counting time, cuz you guys are also gonna be doing the count.
Right, right, that's what I said, I took it to nine.
Yeah, so, they're right, the time, the time of eight o'clock is just during the. Until eight o'clock time, cuz there's the assumption that we're gonna need all of us there when we do the count.
Right. So, um.
So realistically, having more than three people there, unless it's because someone is taking a lunch break. Or a meal break or a bathroom break, you know, with what we do. You know, it's, it only requires two to three people. There's, there's never a time where four really benefits us.
Exactly. That's what we said, but.
My thing is, is I, I don't want anybody being there from the start to the end. They're exhausted and then they have to do counting.
No, not me, cuz I've got an infant child here all day. I don't mind being away. Now he's here twenty-four hours a day, sorry, I love him to death.
So I guess, I guess the only.
Election day is her vacation.
The only, the only other time when we have, um. All of the, the election judges normally or all the supervisors is when we are processing the absentee ballots. You know, and actually, cuz there's this process of cut them open, um. You know, make sure that the paperwork matches up. You know, and we're given the opportunity to like look at the signatures before we drop their ballot in. So, and so we may want everyone to be there starting at seven o'clock. To do that, but then we run into that same issue of we're now processing the absentee ballots so late. There's no time to try to cure them if somebody missed a signature or otherwise screwed up. So, I don't know how people feel about that. You know, do we?
I'm kinda hard ass on it. And I would be like, if you messed up, and maybe, I, I just don't think we're there to cure things.
Right. Right, well, the only, the only other way I could think to do it was if we had like some overlap time at. You know, like around lunch or, you know, shortly after lunch, you know, we're like doing the switch of shifts or something.
Right.
I'm sorry, Joe, you, you have.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I was saying, I like the, uh, to, the seven to two and then the two to nine. So, you know, as a means of making sure that we have three people there from seven to two. And of course, from two to, to what?
Eight.
Nine, but we can't, you can only have two people there at any given time, and you're not gonna get three people there with five.
So then potentially, so we have Yvonne there all day, and, and so, and so one of the things that I, I did, I did bring up the issue of. When we. When we set the chairperson in the December meeting is that our chief election judge does not have to be the chairperson, so. If Yvonne is going to be there all day, I, I would recommend that we make her the chief election judge.
I am.
People rotate around her. That seem reasonable? So, um. Yeah, the seven till two, um, and two to, and two till, well, okay, it's not two till nine, so nine is the final of the count.
Right.
But realistically, you know, we probably need everyone coming back in at seven, so maybe seven till one. One till, you know, and then those people come back, seven till, till nine, and then the other people are working one till nine.
Okay. Two, two to one and then one to nine. I mean, seven to one and then one to nine. Anybody have preference for their time?
Afternoon.
Oh, I was gonna say that for you, I thought that'd be best.
And Yvonne, you know, I'm morning, so seven to one.
Okay, Joe is AM, I'm PM. And Evelyn wants morning.
I don't care.
And, and we might, and we might still have to play it by ear if somebody gets sick, so.
Exactly.
So, I mean, this is, this is a tentative schedule.
Okay, so, Evonne and Patty doesn't care. So, uh. Joe's gonna be there in the afternoon. Patty, how about you come in the morning?
It's fine.
Okay.
And then come back at seven?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll come back at seven. And then we haven't got, um, Jay.
Who's Jay? Oh, John Summerlot.
John, I don't know why I wanna call him Jay.
Because, because he, he also goes by Jay.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
And I was, I was specifically saying Jay versus John the last time, so I didn't have to like give last names when. You know, if I was talking to the clerk or whether I was talking to the election supervisor.
Right, okay.
All right, good, all right, so we've gotten that one covered, uh. We've already discussed absentee, we still do need to review the supplies for the absentee ballots, just to make sure that we have sufficient envelopes and whatever. Printing. Should we discuss pandemic precautions or should we jump back to the election procedure stuff? Cuz. I guess pandemic precautions matter for if there's anything else that we need to order before the election.
Yeah, no, I've got all the stuff we need pertaining to that, and he's got the mask, he showed me before. Both the regular, the N and the K, the ninety-five.
And then, and we can get the.
The one concern is. We're still gonna have a monitor, so we're not gonna have to monitor from there, we can hear it beepin'. We don't have to have a person staying out there to see that they're doing it.
All right, so my question is, is you said you have masks, is that for people, for us or for people who are coming in?
For us.
For us, um, we should probably see if we can, if they don't have the surgical mask type stuff, maybe we could. Get a box of those and offer to any, any of the people who come in with.
He said he had those.
Okay, good, cuz I remember one person who had this mask that was like, it was a paper mask that was absolutely falling apart.
I've got some I could put in the box. My box of things.
And do we have, what, what is our? What is our process if, if we have somebody who doesn't wanna wear a mask?
Okay, so, so, so we act, so, so this could get us into trouble. Um, so for, for two thousand twenty, when we did the special elections, we, we said that. That what we would do is, we had a separate election booth set up outside. We had the second ballot box, which was the one that we had used for questionnaires before, so it was a separate locked box. And that we would walk the, you know, one of the election judges would walk the materials out to the person so they could vote outside. Now, mind you, it was summer at that point, and, and I had specifically made a, um. Voting privacy screen out of yard signs so that way I could like wipe it down in between people, cuz it was plastic, not paper.
Yes, you did.
So.
Did you save those?
I, well, yeah, they were Marlboro Day signs, I still have.
Okay.
Fifty to a hundred of them. So, uh, the only problem is that the table that we had used for making that. I think is being used for other things these days, so we may need. Another table to put outside for people, um, so the, the thing is though that, uh. I don't know if it'd be tall enough.
Yeah.
I just. So, I mean, cuz part of the issue is, you know, we don't want him to have to bend over to do it, so, I mean, I do have those. Those bins to like get a standard table height up a little bit higher, but if we can find more of those. The, the small tables that are adjustable in height, the town used to have two of them, I think, and. You know, we may have to find where the second one is and disassemble whatever it's being used for.
Well, yeah, cuz we used those the last time.
Right.
For people for that reason.
Right, we used one of them so that way it helped to set them further away from us, so we maintained our six feet. But they could still sign up when they were at the, the, the table, but the second one. I think was being in use for where they had the temperature check in, in the back hallway.
I, I have a, a six foot, I think it's adjustable, I'll check that.
Yeah, see, I have a, I have a six foot, but it is not adjustable like that.
Yeah, I think the one. Yeah, I think the one that's downstairs is adjustable.
Okay, um, so anyways, what I was saying.
Does it take them to vote for Pete's sake? They can bend over to vote.
Yeah, well, and it's.
It's not like they're spending half a day reading a novel.
Uh, there was that election, we're not gonna talk about that election. Yeah, we had chairs in all of the voting booths that day. Um. So, uh. In the, in the declaration, they set some requirements on us for what we have to do and. When it had been done at a town meeting, I had gotten them to change some of the requirements, but, um. Oh, all right, let me try and pull it up on my phone, so I don't have to load my laptop up, um. It would be in the stock, in the packet from the last meeting. Uh. Let's see, stuff from John. When was last meeting? Uh. Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday. All right, so the condition that they said on us is limit ten persons in the voting room at a time. Voters will enter one door and exit a different door. Six-foot social distancing and masks will be required within the polling place, which we are taking to be households and not individuals. Voters will be screened via temperature checks prior to entering town hall or in a designated separate or partitioned area or foyer within the town hall. Um, any otherwise qualified voter who's screening at the polls exceed acceptable guidelines in order to protect the public and staff will be offered or may be required. By the chairman of the board of election supervisors or his or her designee to use a provisional or emergency absentee ballot for which to vote. We have no provisional ballots. So I had gotten that language struck the last time to, you know, like alternate polling place and it somehow wound up back in there. Um, so we can, you know, offer them an absentee ballot or this other method. I think still complies with that demand on us. Does anyone else take issue?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
We can, we can give them the, you know, we can give them an, an emergency absentee ballot form if they wanna go that way, which is a whole lot more work. Uh, hand sanitizer will be made available at every voting booth and station.
I have all of those.
Yep, yep, which. In, in ours.
Pencers.
Yeah, when the ones that the election judges had said was when they enter and when they exit, but. I still think it's, if you give them that option, you know, as soon as they come in, give them.
Right, but then we still have to fill around.
And we still, yeah, we're required to have it at the booth because of this. Um, election judges and voting booths we protected by plexiglass shields as deemed by the board of election supervisors to be practicable and effective. We have not used them in the past, but, um, with Omicron, I think there is more of a concern. Um, something else that I have purchased supplies for, um, is, uh. Basically, it's for HEPA filters and a box fan to make a system to like. Filter the air while we're in there, but that will create noise, so.
Well, that'll keep us awake a little.
Yeah, well, I, I was thinking that we put it, we put it like in the center of the room, so it's near the, the center of the three voting spots.
Right.
Um, and then that would sort of like give a little bit of white noise back there also.
Right.
So, you know, cause if it's too much white noise, then we can't actually talk to the people when we're masked and behind plexiglass and everything else.
Well, Joe, now you're talking about a cord running across the floor as people walk in.
Taping down.
I have, I have tape that is specifically meant for that sort of thing.
Okay.
So, yep. But yes, I should bring an extension cord, that is an excellent point.
Put one in there this time.
Uh, extension cord.
All right, uh, so this election procedures document is, we're already two hours into this, I think that we should at least review the stuff. The advanced stuff, I don't know if we should get through everything, um, but reviewing it, uh. John, is it, is it possible for me to take control so that way I could be like live editing in Google Docs? Like need to share my screen? Sorry, what was that?
I can allow you to share one moment.
Right. And now I have to figure out which Google Chrome, there we go. All right, can people see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So, uh, procedures for town of Upper Marlboro elections, this is an attempt to document the procedures as used by the board of elections for the town of Upper Marlboro. To run elections to ensure that, I guess I should have said, board of supervisors of elections.
Do you have, um, track changes on one?
Uh, okay, I should switch that back to, okay, I did not for that one. Does anyone have a complaint with me for changing it to board of supervisors of elections?
No.
Okay. Uh, for the town of Upper Marlboro to run elections, to ensure that elections run smoothly and that all voters are treated fairly. The official requirements for running the elections are detailed in the town charter and ordinance two thousand one dash two. Which election judges should also read as the procedures attempt to comply with the requirements and occasionally reference them, but are not a replacement for them. Oh, right, okay, so I added a new block, which kind of. References to the town charter are given as eighty-two dash number, number such as eighty-two thirty for town charter section eighty-two thirty. And as to a number for ordinance twenty-ten to section two A nine. And then I added one for references to Maryland state election law are given as section mark, number, number, dash, number, number, number. Um, and then it used to say, this document focuses on the needs of the day of the election and immediately afterwards. It does not cover other actions which must be taken ahead of the election, posting notices, absentee ballots. Drafting, printing ballots, collecting materials for the county boards of elections, et cetera, but, um. Yeah, it now covers a whole lot more than that, so I think I should strike that. Any objection?
Nope.
Uh, and then I can say, yes, I saw the note of, at, um. Oh, I did have a note in here about, I had spoken with someone from state elections that said that state election law has no impact over us unless we choose it to, so. I think it's still worth mentioning Maryland election laws when we're complying with it, so. Uh, there. So, I don't think that's in. I think I added a quote mark and changed the formatting, which I don't think are objectionable. Anyone object to me changing the formatting? Hesitate, all right, so then I put in here, because of this whole shall issue, shall in this document indicates a requirement, not a suggestion. Requirement stated in this document may be superseded by the town charter, town ordinance, or state laws and regulations. But this document must be updated when such conflicts arise to ensure both the board of supervisors of elections do not have to refer to multiple documents to run the elections properly. And citizens can have confidence the town elections are being held properly and we do not have procedures that are being ignored.
I love you.
But of course, I already said in the earlier that, hey, you should make sure to read the other ones. And that, you know, this isn't a replacement for these other documents, but. I don't know, I mean, is that a conflict now?
What?
Is what a conflict? Hey, the other one says it's not a replacement for the other one, but this one says, hey, everything should still be in one place.
Uh.
Anyone, does anyone object to this new language?
Not.
No.
Okay. All right, election preparations, election schedule. Uh, the town clerk shall prepare an election schedule and include significant dates, including any deadlines, town meetings, and town office closures known at the time. The board of election supervisors, no, that's board of supervisors of elections. Supervisors of elections.
Yo, can you do supervisor and then do the BOSE? And then just use BOSE throughout?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
It's probably easier. There you go.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, shall we review the document to ensure it complies with the town charter, town ordinances, and any other election laws? Uh. Review the document. Uh, oh, great, cause we're talking about the schedule, should require, so I should probably say schedules, there's no ambiguity there once you. Uh, important dates, the election day, deadlines, candidate registration, voter registration, both county.
Capitalize county and town.
Okay. Uh, absentee ballot request, when the above deadlines must appear in the newspaper. When notices must be given to the newspaper so they will appear in time, posting of the sample ballot, when election materials must be disposed of. Uh, oh, right, um, what else did I forget? Uh.
Can you get rid of of?
Which one?
Must be disposed.
Okay.
Get rid of the of, I hate those prepositions.
Um. Guess we were looking at, oh, I guess it's not a, um, the other deadline was, uh, uh.
Five.
Well, the, um.
Or within six months.
No, no, I was gonna say, this is the posting of the sample ballot, the other deadline that was significant was the, um.
Emergency?
No, uh, poll watcher.
Okay.
Mission of a poll watcher. Vacancy that's triggered the election, if a special election, town meetings and work sessions, town holidays or other reasons, the town offices may be closed. When voters may begin requesting absentee ballots, anything else that may affect the election. calculation of important dates, if a deadline for members of the public is given in days, it will be considered to be calendar days to give the public as long as possible before they need to respond. If a deadline for BOSE. I guess I should say for the town. Deadline for the town is given in days and is less than seven days will be considered to be in business days to ensure the public is given sufficient notice. If a deadline for members of the public occurs on a weekend, holiday, or other day that the town office is closed, it shall occur on the next day, the town office will be open. If a deadline for the town to provide notice shall occur on a known day, the town office will be closed, the deadline will be the day before the closure. Which I pretty sure is what we did. When we were adjusting the schedule, so we're not like automatically shooting ourselves in the foot. If a date is given relative to a given month of the year, the board of election supervisor, the BOSE.
Change it.
BOSE will attempt to come up with an appropriate equivalent for special elections, given the compressed schedule. With an attempt to give the public as much notice as can be accommodated without creating an undue burden in running the election. Uh, eighty-two dash twenty-nine, which is the one that says we have to give notice. Um. Right, nobody, no, sorry, eighty-two twenty-nine is special elections. Uh, dates set by ordinance or charter, all registration days and elections must be published two weeks before in a newspaper, eighty-two twenty-three. Uh, second Tuesday in September are even years is the deadline to appoint board of supervisors, and I have the note of, I don't think that should. Well, it, it is like even years, it shouldn't be odd years. But when they made the charter change, they flipped it to even years, so like that is something that they're gonna have to do another charter amendment if they wanna fix.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh. Fourteen days before the second Monday in October is the deadline for us to give notice of the candidate deadline. Second Monday in October preceding the election deadline to register as a candidate. First Tuesday in November of odd years. On the town elections. Special elections must occur thirty to forty-five days after the vacancy. Uh.
All right, Joe, wait, 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 well, well, okay, so why is September even years when we're done? And odd years for the election?
If they screwed up, they like flipped the even years to odd years with the, cause it used to be that. Um. The, the elections, because they happened in January, but everything else was, you know, the year before. There was mention of even and odd years in there.
Okay.
And when they did the charter amendment, they flipped almost all of them.
Okay.
Rather than just flipping the date of the election. They also flipped the one that was the date of when our terms expire. But our terms should have remained in the odd year, they should not have been flipped to the even year, so.
Oh, but they did flip it to even years.
Yes.
Okay.
So that is. There was a lot of other stuff that was put in there that I like questioned, but, um. But it's the charter, so we comply with it unless the lawyer tells us that.
Did it say, did it say shall?
Uh, it might have. Well, it's more messed up than that, so it's, it's, uh.
Let us go through this, I have been working since four thirty this morning.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try to get this, okay, so there is one that is in accordance to state law is how they now worded the deadline to register with the county. Cause that used to be thirty days, I don't know what it is in accordance to state law. Um, voters can be requesting that absentee ballots thirty days out. The deadline for notice of voter registration in newspaper, because the voter registration in the town is ten days and we need to give fourteen days, it's twenty-four. Deadline for notice of the election, fourteen days out, absentee ballot request deadline is ten days out because of the. We had that discussion that it's like, it's a weird, it's a soft deadline. Uh, deadline to register with the town to vote, ten days, deadline to post a sample ballot, four days. Deadline for selection of the poll watchers, three days, and those both fall on weekends, so they get screwed. Um, then we have the day of the election, um. Two days after at noon, we have to have the certification done. Uh, seven days after, we potentially have to give notice of a runoff election. Uh, ten days out is our deadline to destroy any unvoted ballots. Um, twenty-one days out, we have to have our runoff election, six months out, we can start destroying voted ballots.
Joe, is there, is there a required when you have to, or are these just when you are allowed to start?
So, so the ones that I say earliest is that is when we're allowed to start, anything else that is deadline, it's, it must be done by then.
So the T ten for the deadline to destroy surplus has to be done.
Has to be within ten days.
Okay, thank you.
I, according to the state, or sorry, the town ordinance two thousand one dash two.
Okay.
So. Um, yeah, usually we like did a cleanup. You know, shortly after the election, you know, it was like certification and all this sort of stuff and.
Right.
You know, just did it, you know, it's, it's actually. It's officially, I, I wanna say the wording is actually ten days out unless we have been given notice that it's contested. So I don't know if I should make a footnote of that, but if I add a footnote, I'm gonna make a comment. Because I'm gonna have to adjust all the footnote numbers if I add a footnote, so.
Add a footnote.
Um. Well, we can potentially fix this after the election, like for the next one of.
So, Joe, can you just go in and do a global search of board of supervisors of election, board of election supervisors to the BOSE? No, not that.
How about this, I, I just copy it and.
Down and replace.
I'm just saying, do a global replace, it'd probably be quicker.
Board of.
I, I don't even know what you are talking about.
Uh, how do I then tell it to replace?
Just like you do find, there's, there you go.
Replace all.
Wow, I didn't know you could do those things.
All right. Uh.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it possible that we could move, um, the rest of this meeting to Monday? Because we've been here now two hours and I have an event tomorrow and I have to prepare for some other things. So I'm wondering if it's all right with you all, we could table the rest of it and move to Monday.
Um, is there anything else that is timed, let's, let's go over the, the subject headings, just to make sure that there's no other timely stuff. Um, notifications, we've already hopefully have notified the county and all that sort of stuff. Discussion of election forums, which we've mostly gone over, there is this ballot tracking sheet that I mentioned that. Our first planning meeting, we've already had, um. Ballot design and printing of materials, the only one is reach out to the printer as soon as possible. And so I guess right now our issue is, are we going to do it in-house or are we gonna go with the other printer that, uh. Um. That John had found. That John had found? Which I assume is the people who printed the election in twenty twenty?
So, Joe, everything in here, is this? The, is this responsibilities of the Board of Election Supervisors? Or is, is, are these delegated to different folks and we need to determine who they're delegated to?
There are a few things that are delegated because of like notifying the county and stuff like that.
Okay.
Um, and, and the getting the stuff in the newspaper.
So has everybody taken a peek at this? I kinda did. I went through it, but it looks like there's.
Evelyn said she didn't have a chance, so I know.
I looked at it when you first put it up.
Well, and that's another thing is that I, I, I tried putting it. Because that it was one giant edit at the beginning, I did put comments in here of like, to let me know that this, this section right here about. You know, you should examine the ballots to make sure there aren't any smudges on them. I know I, I put a comment, so I knew I had modified it today.
Okay.
Not match the, uh.
So, so how about we all just kind of go in here when we get a chance? Um, if nothing else, just say we've looked at it, even if we don't want to put comments. So Joe's aware that we have actually gone through this whole thing and add comments if we feel there's something that needs common or clarification. That way, that way you know everybody's eyeballs have been on it, Joe. And you don't have to go through every single line. Um, are you done editing it so that what we have here now is, is, is pretty close to done or based on, other than our suggestions that we may make?
I think it's pretty close. I guess the, we don't get pink cards anymore for emergency voter cards. Those are now white.
White, right. So, Joe, you can go over it again too, because it looks like you're going over it as.
Yeah. Yeah, unless you like really look through it, you get issues and. Uh, replaced, yes. I should have like figured out how, I should have switched myself into not suggesting when I did the, uh. I, I will approve all of the B O S E changes so that we don't let scratch out. Um, there are also, there are a few other ones that were just capitalization stuff. I can clear those. Cause, um. Yeah, that, this is the stuff from the old document. Um, of like day of stuff.
Yeah.
Um, I added the specific stuff that we did with the, um. What did, what do we call it? A, uh.
Do, Joe, do we need a delineation between the chairman and the chief?
I think I made a note of that, that they can be different in the. First meeting. Cause I also made a mention that, um. You know, it may be necessary to change the chairperson. I, I did say chairperson and then officially it's chairman, but. You know, we're trying to be inclusive. Um.
I'm, I'm kind of on the, the fence with, uh, John to give him, um, consideration.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah, 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 I wanna.
I think we should adjourn and pick this up Monday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything else that's a major, the, the only, the only one, and it's, you know, obviously not going to get done tonight. Is we need to get moving on how we are going to do the ballots, whether we outsource it to the folks up in, I think it was Mount Rainier. Um, or print in-house because. You know, either make sure they have the materials so they could, are ready to print as soon as possible or order the perforated paper now. So we can do it. Can we, so you want to hold that off and have another meeting on Monday?
I, I would be, um, fine with that. Monday, Monday.
Will we still have time to print?
Feel, we don't have no candidates as of right now.
Yeah, well, I mean, whatever it is, it's basically making sure that we have the materials so we can start printing by February seventh. Or as close as possible to February seventh.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm sure we, John knows, uh, places where you can get it done in an hour if you do have to go outside.
It's, it's.
Really good friends and we can, she can do things for me in like a few hours. That's why, that is why I have that relationship with her.
Yeah, also, um. If you get a chance on Monday, John, can you look over, you know, if, if there are any notes of who printed the ballots for us in twenty twenty because, um. Uh, Dave had, had coordinated for that printing and I don't know who he used.
Okay, I'll look that one up.
Uh, because they might be reasonable and have good turnaround for all we know. So, um. All right, uh. So I, I think I've, I've heard suggestion that we adjourn. Do I have, does anyone wish to make a motion that we adjourn and?
Motion that we adjourn.
Well, actually, Monday at six o'clock, we all agree that. Or is there anyone who cannot make Monday at six o'clock?
Somebody needs to check with Jay.
Should we schedule it and see if he can?
Yep, I'm fine. That's fine. Go ahead. I'm just saying, just make sure.
I will, I will let him know that we are scheduling.
So if you can send me your proposed agenda, I will go ahead and get that up tomorrow so that we are in compliance with open meetings act.
Okay, um, I think the agenda is basically, uh. I mean, if anyone, well, we'll always put the, you know, adjustments to the agenda thing and in any other business on there, but, uh. It's mostly going to be going through the procedures, um. And if we have any more information about alternate printing sources for the ballots. I think are the only two things that are really big at this point. Nelson, I will send that to you in an email. So you have it for posting.
That's awesome. Thank you. And I will get that.
Anyone else think of anything? Any other time critical items that we need to cover?
I have a comment.
Okay. Go ahead. But what is your comment, Yvonne?
Oh, I thought I was just talking to myself. I was just, the, the thing where they, uh, budget and they want us to keep the budget down. Yet they spent all that money for candy for Halloween.
Yes, I.
Honestly, that, that should go on the agenda as well. We need to know what our budget is.
Exactly.
Or we just keep spending and let them cover it. I'm fine with that.
Other thing is, we don't know.
Steak for all of us for lunch for, uh, the election day.
Well, no, no. So there are certain sunk costs that have already occurred because I don't know. You know, like, how much does the stuff that the county is doing for us cost?
So everyone is clear, hold on, so everyone is clear about budget and the way that works. There are line items and in those line items, there is money allocated. So you have to understand that buying all that candy for trunk or treat, that was an event that was covered by, of course, that line item.
Okay.
So you have to understand that there's also a line item for elections. And if, if we have exhausted, if Board of Election Supervisors have exhausted that line item. Then what will have to happen is a budget adjustment is going to have to take place. Where money then is going to have to be moved from some other area in the town to cover those expenses. So what they're trying to avoid is having to take a lot of money out of different line items and move them into this line item.
Oh, okay.
So that's why this is happening the way it is. So it's preventative. We did not plan to have a special election, so the plan was to have the one election in November. So now we are accommodating to make sure that this gets taken care of and we're trying to do it at the least amount of expense possible. Because a town of this size should not have an exorbitant amount of expense when it comes to elections. So that is why it's being handled the way it is.
Okay.
If it was a normal situation. And that is going to happen for the future. Now that things have changed, that the charter amendment has been put in place. They will go ahead and they will make sure that money is allocated correctly going forward.
Okay.
But unfortunately, given what was there before, that is what the money was allocated at. So we're doing the best we can to make sure that we were covering this and we're doing the right thing for the taxpayers and for all of you.
Right.
So, John, is there any possibility that Will can generate a report of what exactly was spent in that two thousand dollars the last time around?
I will ask him to generate that for you because I think that would be a good thing for you all to look at.
Yeah, because we don't even know, you know, what all of the costs were the last one because some of them were done.
That's fine. I will definitely get him to run, align all the items that were put into that and let you guys see it.
Okay, thank you.
I think that will be helpful for all of you.
So, Joe, is, is there a requirement for this board to submit a budget?
No.
Okay.
Um, it's. I mean, basically, it's, it's, you know. The, it's, it's weird because there was just a line item. We. Did what we needed and it got adjusted if we ever overran and it was. Not, you know, it was just, it needed to happen. Because I mean, obviously we would have overrun in twenty twenty because they had to have two special elections. And that wasn't, was that even an election year? Yeah. Yeah, that was an election year. Yeah, yeah, we had, oh, we had four that year because. All right, no, I guess, no, the two specials may have been after June because they were summers, but we, you know, we've had.
One for Ron and one for Kai.
Yeah, we had four elections within one year.
Yep.
Because of the three special elections.
Right.
So, yeah.
Well, you guys ought to have this down pat then.
Yeah, that's why we were documenting it and stuff. That way we were good for all the, because we knew we were going to have two elections back to back.
And a lot of municipalities, I have to tell you, a lot of municipalities overspend during the election cycle. So you're not alone. So this is not something that's, that's abnormal. So the thing is, we just have to do what's best for. You know, the situation and it's just, you know, being mindful of those dollars and trying to figure out.
And I don't, and I don't know.
To fit, to make it work.
Yeah, I don't know how much is like, has it been adjusted for inflation and has the county's costs to us gone up? Over the years and have we changed what services we're getting from them?
See, and that's something we are planning to move forward with. We are actually, and that's something I'm working on with Will. And with Kyle, we are actually working on doing a budget book where you actually will now be able to see. What was spent in twenty-one versus what's coming up in twenty-two. And we're actually going to put something together where it'll be historical so that people can track what was actually spent in twenty-one, twenty-two, and then going forward. And that way you all then can see the track of, you know, where inflation's there, you know, where things are, are coming into play. So that's all on the horizon. It's something I'm working with them on now. Um, as we go into budget season to make sure that we can do, um. The proper municipal budget as it should be.
Uh, thank you and.
Thank you, John.
Yep. And also I, I don't know if you can mention this to Will, but it would be really useful to know, like. How stuff goes out through the year because there's always those things that are like. Hey, why is there, you know, no money's been spent? And it's like, well, that's because it doesn't get spent till December. You know, where the money comes in, in, you know, a certain time of the year as opposed to, you know, evenly through the whole year, but that is not for this meeting. So, uh. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, meeting adjourned at eight twenty-four. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a nice weekend, everybody.
You too.
Y'all too, bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Oh, Joe. And Yvonne and everybody, before you go, uh, we're gonna, uh. Get, we're gonna meet Monday, right?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted.
And I will, I will send an email out to John immediately after this to give him an agenda.
Okay.
Posted tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Night, everyone. Good night.
Bye, John. Good night.
Good night.